Good evening, everyone. Thank you for making time to come to the Oregon City Planning Commission meeting tonight for August 14th. We have a different location, as you can see, and we should be very thankful to all of our city staff for getting everything organized and improvising in a situation where the main building that we meet in is being remodeled and some things are going on there, so thank you for bearing with us. We normally have neighborhood meetings and parties and other fun things in here, and this is going to be fun tonight as well. So, anyway, thank you for attending. As you are aware, we have one hearing item. We have time on the agenda for public comments, and I think we will go to that now. We have one person who's interested in commenting on something that is not currently on the agenda. And would you like to come forward, sir?
Good afternoon. Paul Edgar. The reason why I'm here, there's an issue that is -- needs to be discussed, and I think it's important to the Planning Commission. And it's something that I believe should not be a subjective call. It's -- a subject is impervious surfaces. I'm being told that--
Could you repeat that?
Impervious surfs--
Impervious--
So, I'm being told that a roof is an impervious surface, but asphalt and concrete are not. And so when I look at a planning site, and all of a sudden I'm seeing 80% of the site being paved over, and I look at it and I say, "Well, you can't do that because our code says you can't have any more than 40% impervious surface per lot." So how do--
(beep) Make works.
How do we -- how does that happen? Well, it happens because, subjectively, we're asking people to interpret whether concrete is impervious or asphalt is impervious. And I don't think that's an interpretive or subjective call. We don't do that on roads. We don't do that in calculating stormwater. But all of a sudden, we're doing that in Oregon City, and I would like to see the Planning Commission come up with an understanding of what is impervious or not impervious. And I'm thinking about particularly concrete and asphalt. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. When we get down to -- gentlemen, we get down to the end of the agenda tonight, we can -- let's bring that back up and chat with staff about that. Is that okay with you all? Two, three, okay. All right. So I'm hearing no objections. We'll do that then.
Short conversation.
I know. I will talk louder. I just need more room here. I take a lot of notes, and I need to spread out here.
I don't think I've ever heard anybody tell you to speak louder.
Oh, yes, I have. Yes. All right. As we said earlier, we have one public hearing on the agenda tonight. It is for the Abernathy Place Hotel and Mixed Use Development Planning File CP 170002, Development Plan File 170003, and Natural Resource File 17004. And before I open the public hearing, I will go through the land use hearing script, as some of you will probably already have it memorized, just like we do. But I will also ask for -- have any of the commissioners visited the site, or are there any ex parte contacts?
Please speak up into your microphones. Thank you.
Bob? I'll start with you.
Yeah, I drove by today and took a look at the characteristics of the site.
I visited the site on last Thursday and looked over the train, walked the perimeter of the property.
Okay. He said he visited the site and walked the property. We are.
I'm familiar with the site, but no other ex parte comments.
Damon?
I've visited the site. I actually take my car into Mel's, which was right in front of there, and around behind it, been to the train station. And so I'm familiar with the property. Other than seeing the developer at other meetings, I have not had any other contact with them.
I've -- is this my --
Yeah.
Been by the site many times. I'm obviously Home Depot and my location of downtown, so I'm aware of where it is. I'm not exactly sure. I've not walked it. But I have another statement to make. There's quite a packet that we've been handed up here of all these statements on Oregon City Chit Chat. Before I saw this tonight, I was going to make a statement anyway. I'm prolific out there. I make comments on things. And there's only two comments in all these pages that I've made, and both of them -- one of them is referencing the fact that I'm heading up State, Montana, or Alaska. I don't think I'd be moving my store up there, but because I was tired of all the traffic on Holcomb Boulevard, because of all the trees coming down and all that. It had nothing to do with this railroad station. I mean, excuse me, the hotel. I've read through the documents of the hotel. I don't understand it all until tonight. When I make decisions, it's based on what I hear here tonight, plus what the city tells me. And for anybody to assume that I'm against something because I make a comment about me moving because of too much traffic up on Holcomb, or anything else, or the other thing was defending -- still to this day, to see a past commissioner blamed and be a scapegoat as a single person to stop some development here. And I'm always going to defend someone's right to ask their proper questions and bring it before the commission. And so I defend that. So I've made comments out here. It's very evident to everybody. Somebody wasted a lot of paper on this to show that I want to move to Montana or Alaska. I'm tired of the heat and the traffic, but it has nothing to do with this hotel. So when I make a decision on this tonight, it'll be based purely in what's delivered here tonight from the city, from those of you who are here, as well as what's in the packet that we sent. And it was quite an extensive packet, a lot of reading. So I hope that meets everybody's approval.
No objection.
And I have visited the site as well. I've been up and down that part of Washington Street on a pretty much almost daily basis.
And I have attended a McLaughlin Neighborhood Meeting where the applicant and the property owners presented to our Neighborhood Association as information only. Our Neighborhood Association has not made any decision about this particular application whatsoever. And obviously, living in Oregon City for as long as I have, I know the applicants quite well, and I'm just going to declare that. But we have not discussed this project outside of this particular meeting room or the City Hall.
I was also at the McLaughlin Neighborhood Meeting, and I forgot to mention that.
Yep. All right. So now we'll go through the good part.
Chairman Edgar, before you move forward, I want to just give you a little context. So I submitted this Chit Chat--
Oh, okay.
-- path. This is -- so what we have on the dais to include in the record is a shit dialogue from the web chat group Chit Chat. A lot of it is irrelevant to this application, but there are some pieces that are, and so we put it in the record so you all can see it. And that's what Commissioner Guile was talking about. So that's why I've added it to the record.
I'm not familiar with the site. I'm not on that site, and I don't--
I wasn't suggesting that.
No, no, I'm just saying that I'm not--
I wanted you to understand why--
You mentioned why we had it, and I was kind of going to ask you, why do we have this? Because I don't know anything about this particular site. All right. So bear with me while I take a deep, deep breath and read this.
So before you start, does anyone wish to question these commissioners about these disclosures? Sing now. Now, take a deep breath and start.
Now, take a deep breath. All right. So we'll start. And I'm going to improvise a little bit, because obviously, we're not in the commission chambers, and I'm not going to be able to point to things like I normally do. So I've already read the file numbers, and we have a public hearing tonight. Staff report has been prepared for each -- for the application, and it has been made available to the public seven days prior to this public hearing. The staff report identifies approval criteria that applies to each of the applicant's proposals, and staff has analyzed that criteria, which is contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that this commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code, and the public hearing procedures are not on the wall. But as you know, we request -- we have the staff report. We then have the applicant come forward. We then have questions of the commission -- from the commission to the applicant. Then we ask for the public's testimony. Then the applicant can come back, if they so choose, and request some rebuttal testimony. And we can ask more questions. We close the public hearing. We decide we have more questions for our staff, we ask those questions. So if anybody has any questions about that procedure as we go along, just please let us know. I know it's usually right there, but it's not there tonight. So anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff, and speakers will proceed -- well, they're in the pile, so I'll go get it to them when I get to them and read them when we get to them. So you should fill out your name and your address, and so that the city can notify you, particularly your email if you would like to see -- get copies of the record and the decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name. Testimony and evidence, and I may emphasize this, should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss these criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open for each application. Any written material received by the city staff during the time period which the record is open will be placed in that record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the staff in order to become part of that record. If a person intends for a PowerPoint, oversized poster boards, reports, photographs, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, please be sure to give copies of that to the staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included as part of the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision in which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for consideration of the City Commission or the Land Use Board of Appeals, or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated responder to an issue recludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. So we will open the record. I do want to emphasize again that the process will be -- staff will provide the report. There will be public testimony, 15 minutes for the applicant, five minutes for representatives of recognized neighborhood associations, governmental agencies, and incorporated public interest organizations, three minutes for individuals, and five minutes for the applicant's rebuttals. There will be maybe questions by staff, discussion, or motion. And I will say that we will try to be reasonable. If you have something that's a little bit longer, we will not, you know, I won't cut you off, but please bear in mind that there are a number of people here tonight who are here to testify, and we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to testify, and we don't want somebody to hog all the time. So, again, we're conducting a quasi-judicial hearing, and again, let me emphasize that if you're going to come up and tell us that you like something, please address the applicable criteria. It's not a like or dislike thing. None of these applications are we like it or we hate it. We need to deal with the criteria, because you help us make our decision. Anything to add, guys? Yes, sir.
I just have a point of clarification. Is this the first or second evidentiary hearing? Because we had it and continued it.
We continued it.
So this is the second.
This is the second hearing.
The reason why I ask is because we had a request for continuance. So at this point, since the second one, there isn't a mandatory requirement for the continuance. We have to make a decision on that.
There is no mandatory request for continuance. I mean, there is no mandatory requirement for a continuance, but the issue will be whether new issues come in.
Sure. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a mandatory requirement, that it's, you know, okay. Thank you.
So Laura, is my understanding we've had two requests for continuance?
That's correct. And Pete Walter will talk about it a little bit more as well.
Okay. Perfect. All right. So I will open the public hearing, and Pete--
Thank you.
-- if you please.
Thanks.
You'd be anxious to hear your staff report.
I have 29 slides I'm going to go through pretty quickly.
Please don't.
Seven parcels located at 415 Seventeenth Street, directly across from the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. The site has mixed-use downtown zoning. It's bordered to the south by Seventeenth Street, Washington Street to the east, the train depot to the north, and the railroad to the west. Proposed development is for a general development plan in two phases on approximately four acres. The first phase, which is the detailed development plan, includes a five-story hotel, 99 rooms with associated parking lot of 101 spaces, landscaping and street improvements, and this includes the preservation of the Hackett House, which is a historic structure that is used as an office. They're asking for a height adjustment on the hotel. Phase two consists of 131 multifamily units and approximately 9,500 square feet of retail space with parking. That will be the subject of a detailed development plan in the future. So we're approving a general development plan for both phases and a detailed development plan for the first phase, which is the hotel. Development does not impact the Natural Resources Overlay District. The applicant applied for a verification of that and submitted testimony, and a Natural Resources Overlay District application shows that this is not within the N-Rod. No. The applicant has proposed four adjustments to the development code pursuant to the master plan, which I will go into later. These are all the chapters of the city code that we have addressed in the staff report.
Do you bring the code?
And this is the vicinity. This is an aerial photograph of the existing conditions on the site. You see Washington Street, Seventeenth Street. You can see Abernathy Creek here, railroad right of way. This is the train station here. Currently, the site has got some other uses on it. Where the hotel would be located for Phase One is right here, which is vacant. Phase Two area has existing uses, including a ballot storage facility, dog grooming, auto upholstery, and some other uses there listed here. Welding supply shop. This is a general phase plan, which shows where the hotel would be located, and then the second phase of the mixed-use buildings and retail area. The Hackett House is located here. The Historic Review Board has already approved the landmark change for the Hackett House, so the parcel size for the Hackett House was shrunk. And that decision is in the record. This is the Phase One site plan. I have a better--
You're not going to review that?
Yep. This is a better picture. Oh, the -- I can go back to the Hackett House decision if we have time. So the Hackett House has an existing parking lot, and then Seventeenth Street would be fully improved with -- on its side of the street with sidewalks and curb gutter. There are not a lot of changes proposed to the Hackett House landscaping, with the exception of buffering the site from the hotel with new, larger trees. The new parking lot for the hotel would be located slightly to the west of the current entrance to the Hackett House, and the circulation pattern provides the principal means of vehicles going into and through the site. And they will be able to get to the parking lot via this rear access drive. And then you have the hotel itself. You have a budding parking for the hotel, and then some additional parking here. There is a pretty significant grade change across the site, resulting in the need for a retaining wall in this location, which is one of the adjustments. I'll go into that later.
Can you show the retaining wall where I didn't--
Yeah, I have a slide that zooms in on that.
Okay.
Yep. The hotel is required to be built above the base flood elevation, so there needs to be balance, cut, and fill in order to meet the flood standards. And the first floor of the hotel is to be built at that elevation, which is higher than the street level. These are the elevations. The east elevation of the hotel in this slide is indicated with the existing development shown, so the Hackett House and then the auto shop on the corner of Seventeenth. The hotel has a port cochere for automobiles, so the entire width of this facade is approximately 80 feet. We include the port cochere in the analysis, because it's attached to the building. You can see that the front entrance to the hotel in this location is reached by a series of stairs. The applicant's architect will go into much more detail about this. This facade was significantly revised over the course of the application period to assure that it made the -- met the main entrance requirements for a commercial building. There's direct access into the first floor of the hotel via this doorway, a large canopy that extends out away from the building, full transparency meeting and a minimum transparency requirements in the code, and a landscaping and a stone wall here. The stair tower on this side of the building is an enclosed stair tower with glass on either side. And then you have four stories of rooms, and you have a kind of stepped-back parapets. Next slide shows this better. This is the -- this is another three-quarter view of the Washington Street facade that was originally submitted. And this is the revisions that extended the canopy and some of the other features to make it more prominent on Washington Street. The north elevation to the hotel, which is going to be oriented perpendicular to Washington Street. This facade is -- oh, sorry. 239 feet long. And you can see that the lobby level is built above the base flood elevation, which you can't read that, but that's what that says. So this is looking from the parking lot towards the new parking lot towards the hotel. And you have an elevator tower, which is the highest point of the building, and so we'll go into that in a little more detail. This is the south elevation from Seventeenth Street indicating the Hackett House. So essentially, when you look at the site plan, the hotel is located on a flag lot, and so there are two lots that will be -- the Hackett House will be sitting on its own lot, following a lot line adjustment. And then this commercial development is not part of the application. So the portion of the hotel that's visible from Seventeenth Street is this section here, which is where the swimming pool is at the back of the building. And this is where the parcel for the hotel actually touches the frontage of Seventeenth And then the rear elevation is the one that faces the railroad right of way, and this is the view from that elevation. This is not a very good rendition, but this is the tree mitigation plan that was excerpt from the Arborist Report. The report indicates that there are 41 trees on the site greater than six inches diameter breast height of those. The proposal is to remove 25, and there would be a requirement for 168 mitigation trees. The applicant did not respond to all of the sections of the code relevant to tree mitigation. So we're conditioning the application to select one of the options for tree mitigation, one or more of those options, and that includes planting trees on-site, planting trees off-site, or -- and/or paying fee in lieu for the calculation of trees.
Excuse me. Did I hear you say correctly that they did not address this?
They addressed Chapter 1741, but did not choose an option for tree mitigation.
Thank you.
Which is, in my opinion, a flexible way to do it, because trees are a dynamic part of any site plan, and the closer we get to construction plan review, we -- it's much easier for us to condition the application to provide a estimate of the number of trees on that site at that time. The landscaping plan provided by Koch Architects is exhibited here, and you can see that the landscaping that's proposed includes parking lot landscaping. We have code requirements for perimeter landscaping in the parking lot, interior parking lot landscaping, a site landscaping requirement, and every area that is not impervious surface or covered by buildings is required to be landscaped under our code. Now I'll go into what the adjustments are that are being requested. These are the adjustment criteria that are talked about in the staff report. Adjustments to the development code can be approved through a general development plan process, provided these criteria are met. They mean -- they require that the adjustment would equally or better meet the purpose of the regulation to be modified, that if more than one adjustment is being requested, that the cumulative effect of those adjustments is consistent with the purpose of the zone. Gold five resources must be protected, any impacts mitigated, and any environmental zones must be protected. The first adjustment is the building height one. I'm going to spend the most time explaining this. Within 45 feet -- sorry, within 500 feet of the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, there is a height limit of 45 feet. And that applies in the mixed-use downtown zone for these three areas that are indicated in the code. The definition of building height in our code is the street -- the finished grade along the street front on Washington Street. But this building must be built above the base flood elevation. So we are automatically requiring that structure be built 10 feet above where the street is.
They're electronic. Don't touch that. (laughing).
So based on our analysis, the proposed building, based on the code definition, would exceed the height -- the 45-foot height limit by 21 feet from the average finished grade along Washington Street. If you were to measure that from the base flood elevation, it would be 14.6 feet, and that proposal is for Phase One only. Height considerations that we've discussed in pages 51 and 52 include the mixed-use downtown zone and the purposes of it, the regional center. The mixed-use downtown zone was adopted to implement one of Metro's regional center designations, and the relevant goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center has not been designated as a designated cultural or historic resource, and we have not been able to find any specific statements in the comprehensive plan or zoning code regarding the intent of the 45-foot height limit. But the height restriction suggests a general intent to provide a step down in building height in close proximity to the EOT. As discussed in our master plan adjustment criteria, comprehensive plan policy 5.22 relates to the preservation of scenic views, and although not controlling over this decision, staff finds that it provides some relevant context for the additional height restriction imposed with respect to the EOT. The Lloyd Hill of the Hill Architects provided this diagram based on our code definition for the height limit. So the highest parapet base is 110.47 feet. The average elevation of finished grade is 44.4 feet. 110 minus 44 is 66 feet, and that is the height that's proposed. And so that's about 21 feet over the height limit, if you calculate it that way, which we feel is the most conservative way to measure the height.
Pete, is the base flood datum the 1996 -- from the 1996 flood, or is it--
Yes. It is based on that flood level. And it's very close to the 100-year flood level.
So was that the same number you guys came up with? I'm assuming staff did their own calculation as well.
The base flood elevation is 50 -- well, the designed flood elevation is 51.7 feet. That's one foot above the base flood elevation, which is 50.7 in our code, I think. And they've designed their finished floor at 51.9. Get me far enough. And the base flood at 50.9. So it's a little more conservative than we-- Second adjustment is a requirement that commercial first floors be 14 feet from floor to ceiling to accommodate retail. to accommodate retail. Applicants request an adjustment for 12-foot. We didn't feel that they have provided yet adequate justification for this, so we've conditioned the application to do that. And we'll provide that. The third adjustment is for a combined height of a fence on a retaining wall. When you build a fence or a wall on top of a retaining wall, which is something that holds back earth, we have a combined height in the code of eight-and-a-half feet. They're requesting 15. And it's for this location here. And the fourth adjustment is for the multifamily building in Phase Two. And this is a requirement to project or recess the windows of those multifamily buildings two inches from the wall plane and provide four-inch trim minimum. So, we don't have a detailed development plan for the hotel yet, but the applicant's requesting that this criterion be adjusted. And we've recommended that they propose additional mitigation to offset that for the multifamily buildings. And that could include minimum transparency, higher quality of materials, greater articulation or modulation, or landscaping.
Can you go back to that?
Yep.
What is it that they're proposing is different? What is the adjustment?
Right.
I don't have my computers.
Don't have the computer.
Sorry, I didn't include that, but it's in the staff report. So, they've requested an exception that wood-framed walls with exterior wall finishes projecting less than three-and-a-half inches from the face of the wall sheathing shall not be required to recess or project windows from the facade. And some of the justifications given in their application were for manufacturer specifications for the windows on these types of buildings. And if they were to follow the code, some of those manufacturer specifications could not be met. But we've conditioned applications to provide sufficient alternative through a material or a trim change or something like that.
There's different manufacturers, obviously.
Different manufacturers, potentially.
Okay. Does that help you, Damon?
I'm still trying to put what he said in English.
Me too.
Well, the point of this is to provide visual interest through shadow lines on windows. So, when the sun's shining on the building, it has real significant look to the windows.
And you don't have the mirror effect of a wall of windows glaring.
Yeah. It doesn't -- it's not as boring as a flat facade.
Yeah.
And their --
Yep.
And their exception is?
We haven't seen it yet. So...
They just want a blanket exception to this rule?
Yeah. The exception is that wood-framed walls would not have to meet this requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
As opposed to the cement or steel tilt-ups and that sort of stuff?
Right. So, we did receive some additional items to put into the record today. James Nacita has given us three items, emails, first being a request for continuance so that they can review some of these -- review the staff report and respond to the criteria. Second email is a request for the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan and the Oregon City Downtown Community Plan, Part One, to be placed in the record. And also, a document called the End of the Oregon Trail Design Guidelines to be placed in the record. But we have not located that document yet. We've located some planning commission, urban renewal commission minutes related to discussions about that document. And if that document is turned up, we'll place it in the record. But so far, we have not been able to find that document. And it apparently doesn't, as far as we can tell, until we find it, there's nothing in the EOT documents that we've located in the comprehensive plan that relate to height so far.
It was a separate document?
Referred to in the back of this document.
Yep. We can talk about that later. I have a couple of suggestions for people who might have it.
Second item is a request by the applicant's engineer, Tom Sissel, to strike condition of approval number 41. This is a condition that states that the applicant should provide any Department of State lands or Corps of Engineer permits, if applicable, to the site. And based on the fact that there is no -- or no wetlands found on the site, based on the applicant's submitted wetland report, they did not find any wetlands on the site. So, we would be willing to support striking that condition of approval. And finally, an email from Mark Matheson related to Two Rivers Neighborhood Association and some other things. And then, the Oregon City Chit Chat document, which we received right before the public hearing.
Pete, I don't have a copy of the Sissel doc email.
Okay. Let's see if I can find that.
We can get that for you. And so, just to reiterate, there's been a large volume of stuff that's been given to staff today. And so, because of that, you know, there was the request for continuance. We would be supporting a continuance until our September meeting. So, we have time to look over things and make sure that we're thoughtful in responses and that we verify that all of the requirements have been met.
I think we'll probably feel the same way because we're not going to have time to read this either.
So, I just wanted to throw that out before the beginning of the hearing.
Right. So, our recommendation is to take testimony, continue the public hearing with the record open to the date cert in September 11th. And in the meantime, staff and the applicant will work on revisions to recommended findings and conditions of approval, which the applicant has requested. They will -- and we'll present them with a final recommendation at the next hearing. And we respectfully ask that the applicant extend the 120-day decision deadline for the requisite period of time. Thank you.
Is there any questions of Pete? Or shall we -- go ahead, Damon.
First thing, can you go back to the east elevation picture?
This one?
Nope. Keep going. Keep going. There. That shows Washington Street being elevated. Is that the case? Or is that just artistry in motion?
I believe--
Because Washington Street does not slope up in the area where the hotel is proposed. It slopes down.
Right. I think we should have the applicant's engineer address that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure. It was just -- okay. And then, the tree mitigation picture? Okay. So, I just kind of, for the record in general, 168 trees were required to be put in because 41 trees -- or 25 trees greater than six inches are being removed. That's the equation, basically.
That's the calculation they came up with.
What is the caliper of the trees that are going to go in versus -- we're taking out 25 six-inch trees. That means 168 wet inch trees.
Well, their minimum six-inch caliper in order to be qualified as a tree under our code. So, that could be bigger than that. And the minimum caliper of replacement trees is two-inch caliper.
Okay. So, the 168 could be less if they put in bigger than two-inch trees, like to screen between Hackett and the hotel. If they put in four-inch trees instead of two-inch, then they don't have to do 168. They have to do whatever the math says is the difference.
They -- yeah, that's been done.
Okay. I just kind of letting it get out there that they don't have to necessarily find 168 holes if they put in bigger trees or--
Sure.
Do things with the site plan, things can change that number.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
We have done, you know, a total inch caliper calculation and then--
Yeah. I mean, for quick layman things, they're taking out 200 inches worth of trees. So, they have to put 200 inches worth of trees back in the system. And whether that's one 200-inch tree or whether it's, you know, 201-inch trees, whatever. I mean, we have a minimum. But I'm just -- but that's the basic idea behind what's happening.
It's the basic idea. And then, a certified arborist may recommend alternative species or -- and that sort of thing.
Yeah. We have a list of approved species in our plan.
For street trees. And then, a lot of the onsite trees would be the recommendation of the landscape architect or the arborist.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So, just to summarize, the bigger tree you remove, the more you have to replant mitigation. So, it's not a one-for-one ratio. And then, the minimum caliper is two inches.
Yeah.
And I think staff knows very well what our position is on that particular issue. We've repeated it many, many times that about two-inch caliper trees, we don't feel that they're -- that's adequate. Any -- Bob, Vern, want to go on? Save questions for later? Or would you like to answer some questions now?
Well, I just have one. The word adjustment, is that being used instead of variance?
The criteria for an adjustment are reserved for master plans. A variance could be for, you know, a development that was approved within a two-year period. Since they're proposing a master plan, they have -- they can request an adjustment at the general development plan level for any future phase. It's similar. It's still the same type of hearing, and the criteria are somewhat similar. Yeah.
Pete, are any changes to the comprehensive plan or code being made to this -- as a part of this development? Any changes to the comp plan or the code?
No.
Okay.
No. No.
So, we're not talking about an issue of use as opposed to site design and standards?
Yes.
So, the uses is approved?
Uses are permitted in the mixed-use downtown zone.
Okay. That issue's been solved and is a matter of policy that is adopted.
Yes.
You were going to go over the Historic Review Board?
Yeah.
Information, please.
So, going back to the Hackett--
There may be members of the public who did not attend that meeting.
Yeah. Sure. In the staff report, we made reference to the Historic Review Board's decision about the Hackett House and the landmark. Pardon?
Page.
Eh, I knew you were going to ask that.
I can find it.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have any slides on that?
I don't have any slides on that.
Can you include that the next hearing, please?
Sure. Yeah.
There aren't a lot of slides, though.
It would be helpful to have something.
So, essentially -- sorry. Here you go.
The whole packet is part of the record.
Right.
Yeah. So -- but I can include the--
We don't have it.
You don't have it. That's okay. We will include it. There were considerations with the Historic Review Board that the site continued to be used, you know, as a historic structure and that essentially by shrinking the size of the landmark, they would not look at the rest of the site for conformance with the historic overlay district. So, they are reserving the criteria for the historic overlay district for the Hackett House.
So, the Hackett House is an individually designated structure outside of a historic district. And the applicant previously went before the Historic Review Board to look at the space of that designation. And the Historic Review Board shrunk the space of that designation.
It reduced the size of the lot.
They reduced -- so, there was no lot line about -- adjustment. But it was the reduction in the designation of the individually designated site roughly includes the lawn area. There is a reference on page 27. There's also an additional reference on page 34.
At the top of 35.
Basically, what they said is our purview is this box. All of this development is generally outside of that box. There's a condition that they need to abide by HRB. And if they need to amend the HRB's decision, then they'll have to go back and do so.
So, it got reduced from what?
From the property lines into roughly the--
What size?
Are you looking for a square footage?
Yes, please.
I don't know the square footage off the top of our head. It is -- the staff report is attached. We'll have it for you in the next hearing, should you continue it. But it's roughly the grass area around, right? If you were to come in from the sidewalks around there?
I know that the lot is fairly large. So, I'm interested in knowing specifically--
I think this may--
-- the existing lot--
This line--
-- reduced to what? And what are the setbacks around the particular house? Obviously, as you're aware, I have a particular concern about that. That's why I'm asking.
So, the -- you can talk to the applicant a little bit more greater detail, but see the -- where the sidewalks are and the hash marks?
Mm-hmm.
There's a property line?
Right.
That's about the size of the reduction.
So, I was just curious. I just want to piggyback onto Denise's comment about the surveys of each of the individually designated buildings. Are the -- are they all -- are all the properties designated? Or are just the houses designated?
Property. Remember when we did the reduction of the Ainsworth property? It was X amount--
It was about -- so, every single one of them is the--
It's the site.
Is the--
Yeah. It goes into the context.
Yes. It's the site.
So, it's really the building, but it also is the site. So, they reduced the site around the building. And their sense was that that doesn't -- that wouldn't, regardless of whatever's built outside of that box, that wouldn't negatively detract from the designated structure itself.
Because I think it can vary depending upon what's contained in the survey.
Well, it does. But it also -- reduction of the site, as you recall, when we did the one for the Ainsworth House, one of the things we were critically concerned about is the impact of the adjoining proposed development would have on the historic site. So, again, I'm very interested in seeing that information and the findings that they made to make that decision. It will help me with this decision in the future.
Yeah. So, they were attached to the staff report as an exhibit.
Okay. Well, before I call up the applicant, I want to just say for the record, I did forget to say, I did talk about my ex parte contact, but I did forget to mention that, yes, I did visit the site. I've visited the site on many occasions. I have been to the Hackett House on numerous occasions. I'm familiar with a particular piece of property that the Hackett House sits on. And I'm familiar with a particular site that this development is going to be on, not only from physically being on the site, but being -- going by it on a regular basis and actually walking the site. Chair, you might ask if anyone wishes to question you about those-- Does anybody want to ask me about that? Okay. Lloyd, I think you're up.
I mean, are utilizing our timer. You'll notice we use it for Planning Division, but for all of our people as well. There's a timer on the desk over there, and there's also a timer here. They should be matching. I can't see that one. There's a thing in the way.
Denise, before I start, I've got a couple of guys you might know that--
Never seen them before in my life. Well, you're listed as number one here, so I'm trying to go in the order that staff gave these to me, so.
We won't be here long. We're excited to bring another hotel to Oregon--
Is your name for the record?
Oh, my name. Sorry. Dan Fowler, Oregon City. We're excited to bring another hotel to Oregon City. It's been a dream of ours for about five years. Many of you know we have the Abernathy Center. And as that business has grown, the need for overnight lodging has grown, especially in the corporate realm. So, we're excited to take a look at this. This is just a little bit of history for you and maybe some members in the audience. But we've been in business for 38 years, and the Hackett House and that property was the first property we bought in 1984. We restored it with a lot of blood, sweat, and tears from our families. And we've had that land for now 33 years. So, why a hotel and why now? As I mentioned, we have the Abernathy Center, and the need for that has grown and grown. So, what we did is we commissioned a firm that looks for and studies whether it's viable to place another hotel in a community and where that viability may be a good match. And so, we did that. We hired a gentleman out of Seattle, Tom Kennedy. He did an independent study. The numbers looked good. And then, we were approached by a company that was interested in putting a hotel there. We didn't advertise it. We were approached, and we're happy to be working with Evergreen Hospitality and the members of that group and ourselves in this venture to bring a Hilton Hotel, the Hampton Inn, and Sweet Story in City. We want to do the right thing. We have tried very hard to design this to fit right and to do right by the historic nature of the Hackett House and the property itself. We think it's a fabulous fit that works well with the Amtrak station for commuting. It works well with the end of the trail. It works well with the businesses in the area, not just ours, but the Grano Bakery and Oregon City Brewery and the businesses there. The customers that'll be staying at the hotel will be shopping in Oregon City. As the Legacy Project develops and continues, I know there'll be people that are -- be staying here and walking down Main Street and shopping and having lunch and dinner. So, we think that-- So, we think the community is ready for this, and we're excited to bring it. We envision that in another, next five years, there are probably two or three more hotels. Our community is changing, and this is the beginning, beginning of it. That's a little bit about kind of why and how we're here tonight, and Mark, you want to say a couple of things, we'll introduce our group.
My name is Mark Foley, and I am from Oregon City, and tonight, we'd like to thank you for considering our application. We kind of opened a new chapter in history here. Abernathy Green was a welcome spot for many people that came down the Oregon Trail, and, and they hit Oregon City, and, and were welcomed by the residents there. So, we're bringing hospitality back to Abernathy Green. Tonight, we have some of our consultants with us, we have Tom Sissel, who's our civil engineer, Michael Arden, who's our traffic engineer, and Stephen Cook, who's our landscape architect, as well as our presenters tonight will be Lloyd Hill, our architect, and Michael Robinson from Perkis Kui, our general counsel, in case you have any land use questions. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
So, Lloyd, your backup.
I'm the backup. Commissioner McGriff, planning commissioners, my name is Lloyd Hill with Hill Architects. I have been working with the development team on this property now for the past six years or so.
I'm going to speak up.
So, does the mic actually go to any speakers, or is it just recording?
You have no idea.
It's, it's rather quiet, so we can get the quality on the audio recording, which goes on demand on our website.
All right.
So, anytime you could shout or project, feel free. Not shouting, just projecting.
I will try to speak up. Let me know if you can't hear. So, we've been working on this property with the development team now for about six years or so. Over that period of time, we've developed a number of different proposals. This is the first proposal that's risen to the point where we're presenting it to the city for, for approval. I'd like to start by just sort of putting this in its context. You all know Oregon City very well. You know, the site is really at, at one end of the historic downtown, you know, grid here with Lament Falls and the Legacy Project at this end, and the, the bridge here, and the downtown Oregon City. As you know, there's been development happening out at the Cove here, with more development, we believe, on the way. The Abernathy Green area, which encompasses landfill and the, the mini-golf area and some other, you know, properties, we think is a, is a big opportunity that will hopefully unfold and create, really transform this neighborhood over the next generation, and we think this project is right at the intersection between the, the current downtown grid and, and, okay, there we go. So, where do I...
We're gonna have to speed it up, Dave.
Where do I point this to make a change? Is it not working? It's not working.
There it is.
There you go.
Okay, so, as you see, on this, on this slide, you see the site, and you see the, the gridded neighborhood really ends at this location, and the city's development code has really been designed to continue the urban character with, you know, activated sidewalks, buildings fronting the street, and, and, you know, the elements that, that... I pushed it once.
There you go.
And it went two slides. So, the existing uses that are around this, some of these uses, we think are in transition. The end of the Oregon Trail should be there into the future, the train station should be here into the future. On the other side, we're not so worried about the uses on the other side of the railroad tracks, it provides a bit of a barrier, but the landscape supply, you know, is probably not a long-term use there. The roofing materials, truck parts, and so forth over here probably will evolve over time as the city matures. You've seen this slide that shows the existing uses on, on the site. Just to walk you through a little bit of the thinking about why the hotel goes in this location, the, you know, there was some discussion about the 100-year floodplain. This corner of the site is out of the 100-year floodplain. The rest of the site is, is in the 100-year floodplain to one degree or another. And you're, you're right, you know, one of the commissioners commented that Washington Street looked like it was wrong. The high point here is at elevation 52 or 53 or 54. It slopes down on 17th, a few feet here, and it continues to slope down this way. So, by the time we get here, we're down at about elevation 40, 44 or 45, and it continues sloping down to about elevation 40 here, or 39. So, by the time we're down at this end of the site, we're about 10 feet below the floodplain. In a hotel, one of the important criteria, there are exceptions, but the vast majority of hotels have the ability for somebody to pull up in their car right near the front door, get out of their car, walk into the front desk. And for Hilton Hotels, this is a Hilton Residence Inn and Suites, that was an important criteria for them. Since the street is down six or seven feet into the floodzone, it just didn't work to have the front door to the hotel right down on Washington Street. So, as we designed alternatives for the hotel, one of the things we did early on was to meet with the Historic Review Board for a design advice meeting, and we had evaluated three or four alternatives for the hotel. One alternative had an L-shaped hotel that wrapped around the, the backside of the Hackett House. That would have been, something that met the height requirements for the city, the 45 feet, but it was viewed as not being ideal by the Historic Review Board because it had this existing house with a big building wrapping around on two sides of it. Another alternative that we looked at was more of a T-shaped hotel, which would have actually required the Hackett House to be picked up and moved to another lot on the other side of Washington Street. That was also not ideal, and really, it was through interaction back and forth with the city and the Historic Review Board that we arrived at the scenario where we add another floor to the hotel, becomes five floors, it becomes a linear hotel, it doesn't wrap around both sides, and it, it becomes, when viewed from Washington Street, much less massive, it's a narrow profile when viewed from Washington Street. So, that was part of the reasoning for it. Now, why is the hotel there, other than the, the floodzone being here? There's a big sewer pipe that goes through here with an easement, so we can't have a building across that easement. So, it either, it's either on this side and it's all in the floodzone, or it's on this side. So, we were kind of stuck on this side of that sewer easement for this project. So, phase, phase one is the hotel, phase two is the mixed-use, you know, project here. I'll quickly go through the, the slides here. So, this is a view of the Hackett House with, this was one of the images similar to this that we presented to the Historic Review Board, that was why they, you know, felt like this was the best of the options that we reviewed. Incidentally, the, 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 the Hackett House parcel, the part of it which is not under the Historic Review purview now is just parking lot. We've left the parking lot in exactly the same location. The curb that we're building there, a new curb, is within a few inches of where the existing curb is. So, we haven't reduced the amount of landscaping around the house at all. All we're going to do is just rebuild the parking lot. So, this shows the access in and out of the site. The primary access for the hotel is from Washington Street here, with a secondary access here, and then there'll be two accesses for the phase-two building, one here and a second one here, vehicular access. This diagram shows the pedestrian access. Interestingly, the, there's, you know, there's street access here with access to the retail that fronts on Washington Street, and we're treating the access back to the railroad station as if it's another public right-of-way here. So, having the building face that with shops and so forth, and sidewalk and commercial activity that will draw people back to the train station. The blue line shows the accessible path connecting from 17th to the railroad station. We're hoping that there may be a future way to get under the railroad, trestle over to future mass transit on the other side of the railroad. This diagram shows diagrammatically how we're meeting the landscaping requirements for the general development plan, and so here is our rendered general development plan for the project. Now, we do not have an application for the second phase, the mixed-use, but I'll just very quickly go through a couple of things that we have done in the master planning for this to help you understand. The area that's highlighted here is the sidewalk and the public sort of street-facing realm, which we have gone to special lengths to create plazas at the, at the corners. I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button here. We've gone to special lengths to create a, a nice corner plaza directly across from the end of the Oregon Trail here, another plaza in the middle of the building, another plaza here, and a hardscape landscape that we think will be very inviting, drawing people back to the train station and providing a way out. The second, the upper levels of the building, there's a layer along the, the edge of the building, which is balconies and roof decks and ins and outs, and you can see the building's not a big, long wall. We intend to address the, the desire for shadow lines and so forth using the architectural form rather than the window punches themselves, which is why we had requested that adjustment. And we just went through a big process over at the Cove, trying to comply with the multifamily housing requirements for these two-inch recesses on the windows and with residential nailing flange windows. It's, it's just very hard to, you know, to, to deal with the technical issues with the typical windows that are used for these projects. So, we're proposing, addressing the articulation on a bigger scale with the massing of the building. The access in and out, there'll be a garage underneath the building here with an access in and out here, and an access in and out here, there'll be a service area at this end. And finally, the pedestrian circulation that's not on the street here, there's an accessible route that goes along the back of the building. It will connect to the first phase over here with additional pedestrian circulation here, and then, this is the pedestrian route that goes from the lobby out to the, to the parking in the back. So, this is, this part of the site plan that is phase two, which leaves us with phase one. And I'd, I'd like to present the design that we have, our detailed development plan for the hotel. The hotel, the, the first, the area that's highlighted, I don't know why it's doing that, the area that's highlighted here is the end of the hotel that faces Washington Street, and as you can see, it's a relatively narrow profile of the building. The, rather than reducing the height of the building here, we're reducing the mass of the building by having a narrow profile facing the street. And the, the, here is a view from, from Washington Street of this end. We've gone to quite a bit of length here studying this end of the building, and have included a large amount of windows to meet the city's transparency requirements. We have high-quality materials, native stone, some, some wood siding or something that looks and feels like wood siding. There's a discussion about artwork. This is the wall that we're talking about here, to have some kind of a historic interpretive art piece that would be substantial. We don't know exactly the size, it might be six or eight square feet, or it might be 15 or 20 square feet, but over the course of the next year, as the project is in design, the idea is that we'll develop and review with city staff options for this interpretive art piece located on this wall, and come up with something that everybody can be very excited about with, about here. So, going around the hotel, the area that's highlighted is outside of the meeting rooms, and it's at an upper level. You know, here's what it looks like from, from the outside. This is the plaza area, which is up above the street level, about six or seven feet or so, and the parking will slope up, you know, gently here, so you can still walk up the sidewalk, but that creates an outdoor breakout space for the boardrooms and meeting rooms that are not unlike a bigger version of the room that we're in here tonight. The, well, there we go again. This area that's highlighted is the port-cochere drop-off area, and it looks like this. And it's located as close as we can have it to the street, but still get it out of the floodplain. And we, you know, we have articulated the building, the height of the building, there, there are parapets that project, you know, up higher and ins and outs to the building. The window pattern that we have in the building, if you think about the historic buildings in downtown Oregon City, you know, there are a few brick buildings downtown, but the majority of the buildings are plaster buildings that have punched windows that are more or less the same proportion as these windows. And so, we've looked at the historic, you know, character of the, of the downtown and tried to, tried to, to use similar themes. So, this area towards the rear of the hotel, as we get past the port-cochere, this will be next to the swimming pool, there'll be an outdoor plaza. This is not a rendering of this, it's intended to give you a feel for the, the sort of scale here, there'll be some screening, but hardscape and landscape outside the swimming pool. And finally, we have the Hackett House area, which is behind the hotel. We're adding some significant, large evergreen trees to create a backdrop here. This edge of the parking here, that's exactly where the existing parking is right now. So, this part of the site is currently parking for the Hackett House, and it will remain parking for the Hackett House. We're, we're taking the existing house with the existing landscaping about, around it and just updating and refreshing the landscape with new irrigation and new plantings. So, just very quickly, this is a photograph of another relatively current Hampton Inn and Suites.
Just wanted to let you know, the red light's been flashing.
Okay, I'll hurry through these.
Just wanted to let you know.
So, so this is what Hilton's current prototype is like, and if you're not familiar with the hotel, I'll just click through, here's a front desk for Hampton Inn and Suites. Here's a two-story-high sort of lobby dining area, which will have something similar to this. There's an enclosed pool that will be similar to this. Here's one of the, well, I'm not sure about...
A room's a room.
It's guest rooms. So, the final three slides here. So, this view of the hotel would be coming down Main Street just as you cross Abernathy Creek, and so, somebody coming to the Abernathy Green from downtown would approach the hotel from this side. This stair element will be something that we think can be a landmark for this part of town. At night, it could be, will be lit from inside, so it's something like a large lantern. The punched windows that we have here are very similar to a number of the historic buildings in downtown. The varied roof heights and varied materials, you know, we have the, the uplit cornices that will be very subtly lit with some, some lighting at night, meeting the Hilton's standard. This is the, the view from Washington Street looking towards the end facing Washington Street. We, we talked about this before, the entrance, pedestrian entrance coming from the street up here with an entrance directly in to the meeting room area and the lobby for the hotel. And finally, the view, view coming from the other way on Washington Street showing the whole hotel. So, I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer some, some questions. Let me just offer one or two additional thoughts here. This project, the approximate cost for the two phases of this project, we estimate the hotel will be somewhere in the 16 to 19 million dollars range, and the phase-two proj, or the hotel 14 to 16, and the phase-two project 16 to 19 million dollars. So, we're talking about 30 to 35 million dollars worth of development cost. The jobs that will be created in constructing the hotel, it'll be something around 70 to 75,000 man-hours, which would be the equivalent of about 200 to 300 full-time jobs during construction. Once the hotel is finished, there'll be 15 to 20 full-time employees there, and this payroll, both during construction and the permanent, will have a trickle-down effect and will provide many more jobs throughout the city. And finally, the taxes for the hotel, the property taxes will be somewhere between 150,000 and 200,000 dollars a year, and the lodging taxes for the hotel, which are intended to really support tourism, which is one of the focuses for Oregon City. is one of the focuses for Oregon City, the lodging tax will be somewhere between $350,000 and $400,000 a year. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I just have one quick question, something you noted, and I'm not going to make you go back on the slide. You were commenting about all the businesses that surround the plan here.
Yes.
But you did mention something about the, let's see, where did I put it in my notes here? The landscape supply is not long-term, and it made me start thinking, is there plans? I know with all the development going on in Oregon City, people use that. When I moved here, I used it, and everybody in our neighborhood did. Is that, does your, the owner own that property too? Is there future plans?
I believe that city urban renewal and, you know, with the designation here that this is really a commercial center, that's really a place holding kind of a land use that's not likely to be the long-term use.
I just didn't know if it was planning, this was the first, and there was going to be more down. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, because we're in a different situation here, we would appreciate that we're not getting any comments from the audience. So if you do need to say something, we really appreciate if you come up to the mic, because that's where we need to be.
Do you have a tally of the number of rooms that you would be able to yield from that building if you were to comply with their height requirement in that area?
Well, we could comply with the height requirement, but it would require a building with a larger footprint and more rooms on each floor.
Okay.
You know, Hilton is really the gatekeeper here. You know, I think the city is lucky to have a high-quality project like this, somebody proposing it here. They really need to get about 100 rooms, more or less, here. And we have, you know, there are 20-some rooms on the, you know, 22 or so, 24 rooms on the top floor. So we really, if we take the top floor off, it kills the viability of the hotel, so we would need to redesign with a larger footprint on grade.
All right.
This is a Hampton Inn and Suites, and I know Hilton also has other lines of hotels, some bearing Hilton name, and I believe there's even one under this as a more bargain-priced offering. Can you speak to what Hampton Inn and Suites is in that relationship?
I'm not sure I'm the best person to do that, but I know a little bit about Hampton Inn. You know, Hampton Inn is, you know, it's a product line that is a bit upscale. It's targeted at both the business traveler as well as the vacation traveler. You know, I think there were a number of different flags, if you will, that were evaluated for this site. And, you know, this was seen as a very desirable flag and something that I think the city is fortunate to have, you know, this, you know, being proposed compared to some of the alternatives that are lower room rate, lower quality, and so forth. It's an upper mid, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't have a full-service restaurant, but they do have, you know, breakfast and wine bar and those, you know, those kinds of things.
Yes, Vern. Can you or someone else talk a little bit about the timeline? You know, when it might, and I realize you can't nail it to the six months or one year, but when it might start and...
Well, we, we've been asked to proceed with the construction documents here. So we have construction documents finished, ready to submit to the Building Department for building permits. So really, the critical path right now is the land use approval. As soon as the land use approval is ready, we'll submit the construction documents. In fact, we did submit the public improvement documents a couple of months ago to the city with hopes that they could be reviewed ahead of the hearing, which didn't happen, but they're ready to go. So we would love to be in construction this fall, and the hotel will take something on the order of 14 months, 14, 15 months to complete.
Good.
So it's not going to be ready for the eclipse?
Won't be ready for the eclipse.
Did you have questions? Damon?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First, to get back to the question I asked about Washington Street, you're not intending to elevate Washington Street.
No, you know...
That was just artistry on the...
The rendering, Anders here is our 3D modeler, and I think Anders and I didn't notice that in the 3D model, Washington Street was sort of tipping down the wrong way rather than tipping up to the corner.
That's fine, I just wanted to, and then, this is my own personal thing, why 99? Why not 100?
If we could have squeezed another room in, we would have done it.
Okay. And then, one of the variance criteria, or one of the areas that you don't comply is you have a 12-foot ground floor instead of a 14-foot. What is...
Well, I believe there are four adjustments. One adjustment is for building height, which only applies to the hotel.
Yeah.
Another adjustment is for that retaining wall, which is on the hotel side. The other two adjustments, I believe, only apply to multifamily. And one of them is the 12-foot, 14-foot. In the multifamily zone, they want to have 14 feet high in order to allow for retail spaces. So our thinking about the 12-foot high there, we'd like to have the retail align at the street level at the sidewalk. And we also would like the second floor of the multifamily project to have the floor more or less at the same elevation as the Port Cachere drop-off, so that we can have an en-grade entrance in and out of that floor. And so if you do the math, that's where the 12-feet floor-to-floor comes from. We think it makes sense in this case because the depth from the sidewalk back to the parking is only going to be 20, 25, 30 feet deep. It's going to be quite shallow. And so there'll be plenty of light, and I think we can come up with architectural solutions for the ductwork and other things that, you know, typically drive the taller floor-to-floor heights, you know, for this kind of a situation. So we were anticipating those things when we requested that adjustment for the future design of the Phase Two mixed-use building. And the fourth adjustment was the window thing, which we kind of touched on.
Right.
We're, you know, we're planning on doing a really killer design on the building here where you're not going to feel like you lost something by not having the windows recess two inches.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, did you get a question or two answered?
I have nothing else.
I, I'm going to go ahead and hold my questions for later.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
All right.
And again, may, we're going to start calling the little names, not the little names, but the names on the sheets here. Thank you so much for filling these out, and please, thank you so much for making them very legible, so I can actually read them. And appreciate your, again, being here. And again, just a reminder, we are looking for your testimony to be addressing the criteria that are set forth in the Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 17. So Scott, get to be first.
Pete, do we have a criteria slide like we usually do?
I just hope I can, if I'm speaking the right words. My name is Scott Guptill. I'm a resident of Gladstone. Thank you for the opportunity to come.
Say your last name again.
Scott Guptill.
Guptill.
Damon will tell you how to spell it.
Yes, I have the spelling if you need that.
G-U-P-T-I-L-L.
Pretty good at names.
I'm here in support of the project because tourism is economic development, and Oregon City and the Gladstone area needs a hotel like this in order to continue to improve. And as you look at the project, we need something at that end of town that really opens it up. If you remember back, the Kruger Lumberyard had a mural of Mount Hood, and that was a great welcoming on Washington. Well, now it's not, and it's kind of a, an area that needs some improvement. This project will add that. And another thing that I think is important is the development of the sidewalks. If you've driven down Washington Street at kind of an area like a Pitt Row, where cars come out of any number of places and different things. And so in a project like this, it'll improve the area, provide jobs, economic development, and make Oregon City a better destination location. So I thank you for your time. I follow the guideline.
Again, we are looking for testimony that's directed towards the criteria.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Danielle Cowan. I serve as the Executive Director for Clackamas County Tourism. We're branded as Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. I am, we serve as the destination marketing organization for the county, and as the last speaker just said, for us, economic development and tourism are one and the same. We are here, I am here on behalf of the Tourism Development Council to offer our support for the proposal and to build this hotel at the end of Washington Street. I have also a letter with me that's signed by the Board Chair of the TDC, John Erickson, for your files and records, which I won't read it now, but I will, I have it here for submission to you. So we have reviewed the submittal and believe the hotel is properly sited and is compatible with the surrounding area. In fact, I note that I think it's a particularly nice area because of the location with the Amtrak station and all the work that's gone on there to make that a bicycle hub and a really cool use for the city, as well as what's going on the End of the Oregon Trail, which we have invested interest in. We do cooperate and work with the folks for the Visitor Information Center that's there, and they serve as great partners for us. This project is in particular need. We did a housing and lodging study over the last few years, and Clackamas County in general, Oregon City in particular, are suffering from not enough lodging properties. And it's a very true statement. They're being built all over the rest of the greater Portland region, but Clackamas County has not been able until now to attract new properties. So this is very exciting for us in our business. We think this will address a lot of other activity that's soon to come with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, some of the other planning and development projects that are underway. This just complements those. It's proximity to the Abernathy Center, which has been popular and well-used, the End of the Oregon Trail, the Museum of the Oregon Territory, and the Glaflin House. This proposal will support tourism in Oregon City and Clackamas County economies. So we believe this is, will be a catalyst for future development and that it does not have any downsides that we can, that we're aware of, and we fully endorse its, this application. So thank you, and I'm here for any questions if you may have them.
Thank you so much. And could you hand that to staff so that can be included as part of the record?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Tom, sir.
Sorry, it's almost past my bedtime.
Uh-oh. All right, we'll get you out of here.
My name's Ron Tom, and I'm a lifelong resident of Oregon City. And for those of you who don't know, I'm a former city commissioner and a former mayor and a former member of the Board of Directors of the End of the Oregon Trail and Historical Society, and you name it, I've been on it. All my life, I have wanted positive growth for this city, and here is something in the right direction. Because it provides taxes in a positive way, it provides tourism. And what better location to have a hotel right across the street from one of our major tourism facilities that we spent a lot of money and a lot of effort and a lot of time promoting, and here is an opportunity to further promote that. I would like to point out as a matter of light that my good friend, the former mayor of Gladstone, pointed out, there are two hotels in that small city toward our north, and Oregon City only has one. So here's an opportunity to have two. The only downside is I wish it would have been done on the Oregon City Mill Property Site. I don't know what's going on there. We haven't developed that. That was our last major commercial, taxpayer property in the city, and here's an opportunity to go in the proper way. I don't see any downsides to having this site the way it is. It's located on Major Thoroughfare. It's located very close to the exit off of I-5, goes right by my favorite toy store, which I visit sometimes, six and seven times a day. And I'd like to clarify the record if I could. For those who saw me hand an envelope to Ms. McGriff when she came in tonight, it did not care, it contained any currency. It did contain a check, however, and that was in payment and an application for the plaque for the heritage site half a block from here.
The Judge Ryan House.
The Judge John Ryan Home, which I've just finished restoring after 18 years. So please give this matter your serious consideration. It's a positive step forward for the city, and we haven't had many of those in recent past. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Tom. I may add for the record that during Judge Tom's tenure as mayor and city councilman, he was instrumental in passing our historic preservation codes. And we have him and that council at that time to thank for getting that in place and making Oregon City what it is today. Mr. Hammond, sir. Nice to see you.
Very nice to be here. Over the years, I've spent a lot of time...
Be sure to introduce yourself, even though I did.
...in rooms like this.
No, you need to...
I'm Jack Hammond. I reside at 32032 South Barlow Road, Canby. Actually, it's closer to Malala. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Clackamas Heritage Partners, and we are the operators and the stewards of the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. Our board has carefully reviewed the proposed general and specific development plans that are being submitted to you today, and we respectfully request and recommend to you that you approve both plans. We base this recommendation upon our findings that these developments are in the best interests of Clackamas Heritage Partners and the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. Board member and President Dan Fowler did not participate in this board action because of his interest in the, in the property. The Executive Committee of Clackamas Heritage Partners concluded that there was no conflict of interest in the submission of this letter, and we, the board, concur. Specifically, the board adopted the following findings of fact. The first, that features of the hotel development, consisting of wood and native stone, its classical architecture style, and historical references to the End of the Oregon Trail will be fully compatible with the EOT site. The hotel we also submit will provide attractive and comfortable lodging for EOT visitors, as well as for visitors to the Riverwalk Project that will soon be coming into being at Willamette Falls. The hotel will encourage visitation by patrons to both sites. Visibility from I-205 of the hoops will be retained, and the siding of the hotel perpendicular to the Oregon, or the EOT will create a pleasing view corridor for us. If the hotel was shifted to a parallel position, that would not be nearly as helpful to us. Approval will enhance the overall development plan of the surrounding area and encourage similar high types of developments in the area in the future. We think it's also consistent with the ongoing revitalization of downtown Oregon City. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Nope.
I have one.
Yeah.
Could you further reiterate and explain to me how the design of the hotel is compatible with the End of the Oregon Trail Center?
Well, it's... Well, it's... I mentioned as far as the architectural style, if we're gonna have a, something is gonna be there, and we think that having lodging right at our, at our doorstep and in an attractive, well-thought-out building is compatible with the long-term vision of that, of that site. Frankly, you know, we've been there for quite some time on that, on that site, and this is the most pleasing development along Washington Street anywhere near our, our property than has, has been developed to date. So, that's, that's our reference to compatibility. Something was gonna be there, and we would much rather have an attractive building that had, has references to the, to being adjacent to our property and the significance of our property, as Abernathy Green, where the, the settlers of Oregon first, first came. And my great-great-grandparents, you know, they, they arrived here in a covered wagon in 1853. So, you know, it's a, it's a big thing to a lot of people in this area that you have this kind of really appropriate development on that, on that property.
One of the adjustments that's, we're seeking to answer here is this, this building height requirement.
Right.
And seeing as that height requirement is directly related to the Interpretive Center.
Yeah.
Can you say a little bit more about how you're, you're not concerned for it?
Well, we're, if, if the building, you know, the, the architect, Mr. Hill, commented about the, the reduction in the mass of the building because it's, it's situated perpendicular to, to the End of the Oregon Trail and is not parallel to it, you know, that really removes any significant concerns that we have about that additional footage above the 45-foot maximum. If, if the, we would much prefer that to a building parallel to us of 45 feet in, in height. The view from I-205, which is, that's where most of our, our patrons arrive, they, you know, we're, we're still readily visible from the, from the freeway, and our hoops are the, are, are principal advertising.
Thank you. So let me ask you one little esoteric question.
Sure.
When are the, when are the tops coming back?
Well-
Because as you know, having an ancestor on, come over on the-
Right.
-on the wagons, they were patched many, 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 many times over.
Yeah.
And I think the loss of those was a loss for the community, so I, I'm asking, are the hoops ever coming back?
Are they coming?
I mean, the hoops are there, are the covers ever coming back?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because that would be, you know-
We, we would, we would certainly prefer to have the hoops covered so that it would, you know, be, be more, remind you of a, of a, of a covered wagon, but the problems that we ran into were, frankly, were economic problems. There are, they were of limited duration, and the maintenance of them, there was an awful lot of expense involved in, in repairing those. They, they'd incur storm damage, there, there's a number of really uncomfortable things that, that happened to us, and we didn't really have the, the economic ability to, to keep those in, in, in a good state of, of maintenance.
Well, you know, the pioneers did the best they could. I figured you'd get up there with a lift and somebody had a big giant needle and you'd make the little repairs, you know, just like the, just like the wagons that you see in the pictures and-
Well-
You know, so think about a GoFundMe site.
Yeah, that's a, that's a thought.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, we're looking for some criteria that we can help make our decision-making.
Right. My name is Jay Pierce, and I'm appearing as a resident of the McLaughlin Neighborhood District with the statement that I'm, I'm one of a handful of the very closest single-family residences to this development on Washington Street. And ever since I moved in and started making improvements to the Babcock House at 1214 Washington, I have been struck many times by how cooperative and forward-thinking this city is in its bureaucratic thinking, if you will, and its support through the various agencies that you have to deal with to get anything done in a, in a town such as this. And I wholeheartedly am very much in support of this development for the simple reason that the, the economics involved, I think, I can just reiterate some of what the other speakers have said, and particularly Judge Tom, I know how long and hard he's fought for these kinds of developments within the city, and we're entering a whole new era of development and potential for tourism and economic development with the Legacy Project on the south end, and this is just the perfect complement to it on the north end. That connection, that link is something I can't emphasize enough, that I, I think is going to, the rising tide, floating all boats, is going to improve the city from north to south end and connect the two in a way that it has not been connected for probably generations in this town. I, too, go back a long way in, in the interest I have in, in Oregon City. My brother-in-law is a Packett, and there's a Packett Street in Canema, and there many times, my brother-in-law and I have, Canema, and, and there many times, my brother-in-law and I have spoken about his relative, Joseph Xavier Packett, who was one of the first fur traders here, trading with the Indians at the falls. And, and ever since then, I've had a historical interest in, in Oregon City and moved here five years ago from the Portland area where I'd lived for 40 years, and specifically because I have this interest, and specifically because this type of development, I, I could see then what the potential was here for the kind of growth that is sensible in the, in terms of what families look for, what tourists look for, and certainly what businesses look for in, in terms of the potential of an area. And I can, speaking to the specifics of the submission here, the street improvements alone, the pleasant drive you're going to have down Washington Street from north to south. Now, the access that people have from 205, nothing pejorative about the businesses that are there right now, but the facilities that are there right now are long since in need of improvement. And taking this project as a whole, and what it's going to do for that section of Washington Street is, in my opinion, one of the best things the city could possibly do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're out of time, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Kent Ziegler. I live at 2142 Merrillwood Court in West Lynn. I didn't always live in West Lynn, I grew up in Oregon City, graduated from Oregon City High School. I'm a fourth-generation Oregonian, and truly have a very strong connection to Oregon City. Many of you may know it or may not know it, but I'm president of the Oregon City Business Alliance. We've had a number of forums each month where we talk about what type of economic activity is occurring in our city. We're very, very excited about this project. So obviously, as you can tell, I'm here in support of it. I appreciate all the time that Architect Lloyd Hill and the developers have put into siding the buildings, creating a visual effect with soft materials, utilizing stone, a wood effect to go ahead and soften the hardscape of it, the amount of trees that are going to be mitigated, either onsite or elsewhere. And it just shows to me, someone that has really given a lot of thought and consideration to making this a Class A location. I, I've mentioned on numerous occasions at our economic forums, activity breeds activity. And with the Cove project now coming out of the ground, with this hotel hopefully being approved by you, either tonight or at, at the continuance, I see things just building. I'm also on the board for the Rediscover the Falls for the Legacy Project with former Mayor Alice North and, and others, Metro Councilor Carlotta Colette. And I too, like the others, agree, if we can bookend downtown Oregon City with the Legacy Project at the south end, and the Cove, possibly the rivers, this hotel project at the north end, the potential that downtown Oregon City has to experience is unlimited. And I have a lot of faith in the Planning Commission for Oregon City, that you will fulfill the dreams of many of its citizens. We all will prosper by this economic growth. I concur with all the comments that have been made earlier about the economic contribution and property taxes, jobs. I do believe that the ripple effect does occur, that when people are employed, they spend the money locally in their community, and I just see this as a win-win for everyone. So, on behalf of myself and the Oregon City Business Alliance, I ask that you support this project. Thank you.
James Nacita.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm James Nacita. Just want to make a point on the record before-
Speak up a little bit.
He's got it right there.
Before I proceed, there's no three-minute limit in Chapter 1750. There's no three-minute limit on-
Very aware of it.
Okay, okay. I just want to have that as an intro. So, I have to, I want to address three of the approval criteria tonight. And by way of introduction, I want to say that I am in favor of a hotel in this area next to the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. And I do, I'm in favor because of my deep appreciation for this plan that some of you may be aware of. Before, there was a brilliant Willamette Falls Legacy Project Master Plan, there was the End of the Oregon Trail Master Plan. And it's, there's an interesting parallel because just as we have Willamette Falls an amazing natural feature that we've industrialized over 150 years, we also have a less well-known and less well-appreciated amazing natural feature called the Clackamas Bottom, which is a gigantic wetland area at the confluence of the Clackamas River and the Willamette River that became the Abernathy Green. And like we've industrialized Willamette Falls, so have we put a dump and a highway and railroads and excavated gravel and all kinds of good things. But that doesn't mean that it isn't there, and we can't put a frame on our development of the area in the same manner, taking a seventh-generation look far into the future and making planning decisions that speak to both the natural history of the area and the cultural history of the era. Our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance is, I think, do that. I think this does that, but we have to have the will to, to enforce it. So with that in mind, I want to speak to three of the approval criteria. One is 1765.050C6. That requires the, the commission and the applicant to address all of the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, including Chapter 5 on natural resources. I'm following up on the Bus Barn case because, part of the reason there was a remand in that case is because neither the applicant nor the staff entered the Goal 5 acknowledged inventory and resource list into the record of that case. There are Goal 5 resources at issue in this proceeding. We have Abernathy Creek, we have the Clackamas Cove into which the storm water is being discharged, and by extension, the Clackamas River, and the Willamette River. So fish habitat is an issue with this project. So I'm requesting that the acknowledged Goal 5 inventory and resource list and the acknowledgement order for those documents be entered into the record in this project and be taken into consideration during the deliberations on this project. I'm also, I have this, I'm asking for it under the Public Records Act as well. So that's the natural resources. Let's talk about the cultural resources, namely the historic nature of the area, both in terms of the Hackett House and the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. I want to talk about two of the specific approval criteria. One is OCMC 1762.055D3. Basically, this says, "The primary entranceway for each commercial or retail established shall face the major street." Both the applicant's narrative and the staff report say that the narrow wall on Washington Street is the major, primary entranceway, and they call it a pedestrian entranceway. I have a substantial evidence challenge to that finding because there is no evidence. And in fact, the evidence is the contrary. First, Washington Street has no transit. People aren't going to get off the bus and go into that Washington side entrance. Second, people coming off the train to this site, and I think it's a good thing to have a hotel next to the train station, they're going to be coming through the parking lot from the untrans station into the entry where the Port Cocheer is. Same thing with most, if not all, of the parking. People are going to get out of their cars, they're going to walk into the Port Cocheer balcony into the, the building. Likewise, it's an entryway because people are going to drive into the Port Cocheer, stop, get out of their cars, go check in, and that's an entrance there, too. People just are not going to be entering this building on that narrow little entranceway on Washington Street. So therefore, the orientation of this building doesn't work. The entrance is the port, the primary entrance is the Port Cocheer entrance, that has to be on Washington Street. So, the other criteria, the third criteria I want to address is 17.62.05, I'm sorry, 17.62, I think it's .50 or 050, A3A. That essentially says, I've paraphrased it, "New construction, when abutting a designated historic landmark, shall utilize materials and a design that incorporates the architecture of the subject building." In this case, that's the Hackett House. Webster's New International Dictionary defines the word "abut" to mean "to border on." In this case, the landmark site is the, you know, the entirety of the property that the Hackett House is on, it borders the lot that this hotel is being constructed on. Therefore, the new hotel has to be, so has to utilize materials and a design that incorporates the architecture of the Hackett House. That's East Lake design, kind of, you know, with the turrets and the circles. That's Eastlake design, kind of, you know, with the turrets and the circles. This design to be compatible with this surrounding area would have to kind of take that Eastlake design as its port of departure. It also wouldn't be a tall, thin building. It would be something more proportional on all four corners. But I mean, I don't think it couldn't be more modern, but it would, it would have that theme that the Hacket House has and maybe incorporate some of the themes of the End of the Oregon Trail Center. The applicant has in fact demonstrated with the Abernathy Capitol that it is capable of constructing a new building in a historic design that's compatible with the historic surrounding area. So too, I think, could it do so in this case. The building, as far as synthetic materials on the exterior, just doesn't, doesn't satisfy the criteria. I think, just to close, I think what could be done is to create a more massive building, shorter, with turrets, et cetera incorporated into the design, and have that back, in the back of the lot, including the Hacket House parking lot, and you'd have the same effect that you would in the building that we're in. This building took a smaller building in front with a more massive building in back, and it really works well. Similarly, something in the back of the lot, out of the floodplain, that would solve another problem, could be built in a more massive design with things like turrets, et cetera, and a wood exterior that would be sympathetic with both the Hacket House and the End of the Trail Center. The Port Cocheur would then face Washington Street and could have a long, nice driveway into it and also have access into it off 17th as well. I think that's the way forward on this project if you want to truly comply with the criteria as well as with the spirit of Oregon City's history and culture and the natural area surrounding it. Thank you.
If I, if I may, before you go, are you submitting the End of the Oregon Trail Master Plan into the record?
I will. I will take like a PDF copy of it, yes. Yes.
You also made a request that the Goal 5 inventory and the acknowledgement order be placed in the record?
That's correct.
I'm not sure that the city staff has an obligation to provide that for you unless you make a public records request, and in which case, we will do our best to provide it within the time. My point, my point to you, Mr. Nacita, is the production of these documents happens pursuant to a public records request. It happens in the time that it takes. And these requests, when they come in on the day of the hearing, like your End of the Oregon Trail Master Plan request, makes it extraordinarily difficult for staff to respond.
I indicated to you, Ms. Richter, and you don't have to be so snide, that I would take a PDF of the document and I would enter it to the record. As far as the Goal 5 inventory, I would in turn warn you that you've just had a case remanded, like I said, because you did not put the Goal 5 inventory into the record in a case. If you want to risk that, you may be, you know, doing some rainmaking here if you want another appeal, but I would just warn you and go back and read the case you just lost, that that inventory should be placed in the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the historic background. I think, Mr. Fowler, you did mention that this is also located in the Greenpoint neighborhood of the city, of the city of Oregon City. There aren't very many buildings that are left in Greenpoint, but this is part of the Greenpoint area that was part of the city and part of the Abernathy Green area. Thank you for coming and--
Am I the--
Being here.
Am I the final one to speak?
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Sure. My name is Jonathan Stone, and I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Oregon City Association. I'm also a resident of Oregon City. But first, before I speak on behalf of my executive committee, I would just like to, this is, just acknowledge personally, this is a very challenging task at hand, and that is, we have a large portion of our downtown business district that we hope at some point, and is planned to, in terms of the various master plans, to become a walkable pedestrian district, which if we're adhering strict, if we're adhering to, if we're not thoughtful about it, we end up with things like the Providence-Flamette Falls Community Center, which is a building on sticks overnight, over a parking lot. And so personally, I would just ask the commission to consider the myriad of constraints with competing goals related to the challenges of building in a floodplain, and that I think that this is a pretty creative solution personally. With respect to my executive committee and Board of Directors, we discussed this project, and as you know, many of you know that we're deeply involved in tourism and economic development in downtown Oregon City. I am not qualified to speak on virtually everything on that list up there, except for the mixed-use downtown district and the intent of that zoning designation in terms of developing, like I said, the walkable urban neighborhood. So I would ask you to consider that in terms of the complexity of how all this comes together. A hotel is something we desperately need. If you think about the economic opportunity of a retail and dining district, it desperately relies on trip generation and the pedestrians that come out of that. And with, you know, the Best Western is nearly 100% occupied all the time. There's, we definitely need more hotel rooms here. And then the future addition of housing as part of Phase 2 is something that I know that the city commission is very interested in, and something that the downtown Oregon City business community is very interested in. So like I said, I can't speak to grading and all that, but that when faced with development opportunity and variances and all those kinds of things, that you're having to weigh a number of criteria in terms of whether or not you accept a variance request or, you know, a non-conforming request, that basically anything that meets our walkable district pedestrian-oriented goals is going to challenge some of the various codes and overlays that are in that end of downtown. So I encourage you to put that in context with everything that you're considering.
Jonathan, I was trying to follow what you were saying. Are you in a sense saying that your board approves of this? Or they just say this got challenges?
So what I'm saying is, is that we are in support of the economic purpose and the need of a hotel, and that we, this is consistent with what every discussion and development task force that we've had would be appropriate for downtown Oregon City.
Okay. I think when I originally heard you, you said something, and I'm not sure I heard it right. Is it in conflict with your downtown business association concept and that this doesn't flow with it? Or are you--
No. What I was referring to, what could potentially be in conflict is that if, if you're not thoughtful about how you execute the zoning and the various standards, you end up with buildings on sticks in this area of the district. And so I think that's, personally, what I'm saying is, I think that's why you're seeing a project with some variance requests, is because to comply with every standard, a project like this, I'm guessing, is going to be challenging to do in a way that, you know, meets everybody's goals.
And that without being on sticks, it looks--
Well, I'm using that building as an example. But if, if, if you're just trying to get by and build a building, you end up with a building on sticks.
I see. Okay.
It's not in the McLaughlin Conservation District, or it would have met some standards. It just isn't in that district. You know, we appreciate what you're saying. The goal, the everybody's goals is not what we're considering here. We're considering the criteria in the, in the code. And we appreciate, though, that you are asking us to do that, but, you know, we've got, we've got our, we've got our box that we have to be in.
Sure. And like I said, I'm not a planning commissioner or understand all of that, but what I can speak to is the mixed-use downtown district and its appropriateness for that zoning code, and that my layman's understanding of everything else up there, that you're having to consider alterations to, let's say, or differences from the letter of the code, is because there are competing things that necessitate those being questions that you're considering.
Why I was asking Jonathan that question is because we've had Clackamas Tourism and other ones, and they don't, aren't applying to the approval, but, but I was asking, so I needed to know if his downtown approved of it.
So and speak to it specifically with respect on behalf of the Downtown Association. I am speaking on behalf of the executive committee in, for the purposes of stating that we believe that this is, it meets the intent of what we were looking, of what development can be in downtown Oregon City. But I don't want to speak to all those other things, but just a personal Jonathan Stone citizen note, I think there's a lot of competing things that are in place there.
Didn't understand that last part, but okay.
I just don't want a building on sticks, so if you can do anything you can do that that doesn't happen, I would appreciate--
And you're right, and it's our role to strike a balance--
Thank you, Jonathan.
--for this competing criteria. Right.
Okay, that was our last slip. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Because I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. Then come on up, please, and then we'll give you a slip to fill out. Whoa, 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 whoa. Please don't start talking before you get up here, sir. Thank you. Yes.
I'm a little new at this. Okay. So I'm, I'm one of the co-owners of Oregon City Brewery--
And your name is?
--company, and my name is Craig Morrow.
Craig.
Yeah. And this would be a dynamite. Our business is only three blocks away. Having this nearby would be a positive for us, especially the construction workers. They get thirsty.
I hope they're not going to be drinking while they're constructing.
Well, no, afterwards. You know, you work up a thirst, don't you? Anyway, it with, what I've realized, right, recently, there was a survey from the Tourism Department, and one of the things they pointed out was, when, how does people come down to Oregon City? They come down for a day trip, they hit the, hit a restaurant, and there's not, nothing there to keep them. We have no lodging, other than the Best Western that's been there for over 40 years, and we're way overdue for it. But anyway, if you come down and you stay there, immediately when you would exit that hotel, you'd walk, go across the street, you know, check out, you know, the End of the Trail Center there. You'd walk down, since we're only three blocks away, past our business, but also walk down to Main Street and such, it would get people to stay in town longer, which is all what we want to do as far as on the tourism side. And the fact that we don't have that, and of course, and then on top of it, the second phase of the, well, I guess we're just addressing the hotel right now. But anyway, just as a local business owner, we think it's a fantastic plan. We like the way it looks. I'm born and raised here in Oregon City. I live in Oregon City. And the look of anybody coming to Oregon City and all you see is Home Depot and a recycling center, this would be a very positive diamond to look at for Oregon City. So I would like to say that we would greatly like to see this be approved by the Planning Department.
We'll come on up, and I'll give you this.
Okay.
Okay, we are going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you for the, we all probably needed just to get up and stretch just a minute or two and use the necessary. So we're back on the public record in the hearing, and let's have the applicant's has, the applicant's legal representative has something he would like to speak to, so.
Is this rebuttal, or is this just additional testimony?
No, this is, it's a little bit of both, but it's just a couple of comments, and we need to have the 120-day extended, so this is their opportunity--
Well, that's only if we're going to do a continuance.
I suspect we are.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman McGriff, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Michael Robinson. I'm a land use attorney here on behalf of the applicant. My mailing address is 1120 Northwest Cooch Street, Coochesville, COCH, 10th floor, Portland, Oregon, 972094128. I really have three things to tell you. First of all, applicant wishes to reserve its rebuttal until the conclusion of the September 11th hearing. We think we'll have more information. We also want to give you our best analysis of the issues raised tonight, so reserving rebuttal till that date makes the most sense rather than trying to effectively wing it tonight. Secondly, applicant extends the 120-day period in ORS 2271781 by 28 days, the period from today until the continued hearing on September 11th. And third, we do ask that you grant the request for a continuance. We think that's the most cautious and conservative way to proceed. Plus, it gives the applicant the opportunity to be thoughtful, as I said, about how to respond to the issues raised tonight. So I'm sure when we come back on the 11th, we'll be able to conclude our hearing with a response to the questions that this commission has asked as well as issues raised, and that after hearing all the argument and evidence, you two will want to approve this application, and we thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Is there anything else, gentlemen? May I close the record and--
Well, you wouldn't close the record.
I'm not finished, so don't jump in before I finish saying my sentence. We're going to close this portion of the meeting, and we're going to keep the record open. So I would like to see a motion for a continuance to a date in time certain of September the 11th. Please.
I saw a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Walter, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Guile?
I, hey, I'm second in now.
I. Alphabetically, you're first.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Chairman McGriff?
Aye.
And just may I ask one question, Chair? It's September 11th, 7 o'clock in City Council chambers.
If it's completed by then, yes.
Otherwise, it's here.
Otherwise, you'll, you'll be notified, everyone will be notified if there is a change of location.
Thank you.
It is scheduled to be completed by then.
Yes, it is, but you know, things happen, so stay tuned, same bat channel, same bat station. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Is that it?
Thank you.
No, that, we're not adjourned, but we have some items that staff would like to talk to us about.
Communications.
Thank you very much. Florida Territory Community Development Director for the City of Oregon City. I just wanted to give you a brief update of the Planning Division, all the work that we've been doing. Also, I wanted to acknowledge here at the end is Wendy Marshall, our Development Services Project Manager, who is here to help us, so it's good to always see public works represented. All right.
Is going to help us tonight or just helping us in general because we're just really cool?
She always helps us. Tonight and tomorrow and the next day after that.
Because you're cool. Thank you.
And you're cool.
All right. So Planning Division, I just wanted to talk about what we've been up to, which is a lot. And this also, obviously, a lot of this extends over to Development Services as well. So this is our total number of planning permits submitted by year from 2014 to 2017. Numbers can be a little bit misleading because we've created new processes. For example, our Type 1 Site Plan Design Review process that we didn't have before the last of August of last year. So total permits, as a trend, I'm going to go through these slides, but one thing that I think is important is, these are permits by year. So this was all of 2014, all of 2014 and all of 2016, and it's striking how high we are when we are just halfway through this year. So my hats off to all of the employees in all sectors of the development because they, we have just been very busy, and I'll show you a little bit more about it. Pre-application conferences, as we know, that's the initial research meeting when someone wants to do a development, depending on the type of development they're doing, they'll have to do a pre-app, is how we call them. And for those pre-apps, again, for all of 2014, we had 40. This year, we already have 44. So we're seeing significant increase in workloads and also the complexity of those, right? None of these applications are really straightforward with a simple minor partition. Whatever happened to two-lot partitions with no overlay districts or subdivisions with no overlays? They don't--
None left.
I remember some of those. Everybody's going for the hard lots now that are leftover, that nobody wanted to do anything with, so now they think they can--
And they're all unhockable.
It may make a news update if we have one because it's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, right? They're gone.
That is, that is the truth, yes.
So, so pre-apps have definitely increased. Again, we're on target to hit or exceed what we did last year, but far increased from what we did before. Site Plan Design Review, I talked about that Type 1 Site Plan, which is a quicker, easier, efficient way for nondiscretionary types of development to have a review. They're over-the-counter reviews.
Have any of those occurred in the McLaughlin neighborhood? Because as you know, I had a very particular concern about that.
Yeah, if they need Historic Review Board or anything like that, then they'll get those reviews. So essentially, if it's discretionary, they can't be a Type 1 anymore.
Right, okay.
That applies to a lot of things, too. That applies to a lot of things, too. For example, non-conforming upgrades is a big thing that throws some of those Type 1s off track. But really, so 16, 17, 43, 99 already this year. Again, a lot of those are Type 1, but still, if you subtract 74 from 99, still a lot of work. And of those Site Plan Designer Reviews, a lot of them are big new buildings, for example, tonight or other buildings that we're seeing in the past couple of years before that. We would have saw a Site Plan Designer Review for a small addition, or not even an addition. For a few years there, it was mainly changes to the facade without really increasing the space, so we're seeing a significant increase in that respect. Subdivision applications also up this year, again, halfway through the year, and we're moving forward with the amount of submittals. Minor partitions, a less exciting graph there, but still, we're busy. So that's...
Historic Review Board applications.
Oh, Historic Review Board has been... I should have a chart there, but since Trevor Martin, our planner that came, his first day was October 31st of 2016, so he's been here nine months, and he's had more Historic Review Board applications in the last few years combined. I'll have to count how many years, but it's more than two, less than five, maybe, closer to five. I'll have to look it up, but it's significant. So my hats off to him for joining the city and diving right in. So that's the applications part. There's sort of two things on the title. One was long-term projects. A long-term project, so Lambeth Falls Legacy Project is obviously still on our radar, and we hope to move forward with construction in 2018. The other long-term project is equitable housing. Pete is our project manager for Equitable Housing Project. We want to make sure that we remove and reduce barriers to housing and provide incentives so that we have a variety of housing opportunities for all citizens of Oregon City, and you're going to see in the upcoming little bit here, a opportunity to sit on advisory committees. We're going to have two advisory committees, the technical and then a community advisory committee as well, and they'll combine at some points, but...
I was going to ask you about that. One of the problems I've had with being on the tech on both sides of that aisle is that we never get to talk to the other group, and I think that there's some real valuable contributions that could be made on both sides if they have a chance and an opportunity to talk to one another. So I'm glad to see that you're breaking the mold with that, so that there's some cross-pollination, because it's very helpful.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we agree. And this project, we anticipate lasting a year or so. You'll probably see some code amendments at some point. And then...
Laura?
Yeah.
Why do you have tiny houses where you have them?
This is a housing continuum. This is actually created by Clackamas County Housing Authority or someone associated with Clackamas County Housing.
It's not ours, then.
So it's not ours, but it is... this housing continuum is a pretty standard one, though, that's been adopted. Tiny housing is... there's a lot of types of tiny housing and different types of... they can take many different forms.
I can see it fitting in like all three of those zones, depending on where people are in their life, so I just...
Yeah, agreed.
So we're also going to be looking at this as it's appropriate to Oregon City.
That is 100% what we'll be doing. So we'll be thinking about what are all our tools in the toolbox, and we'll work through that as a community, but the purpose of the project is to see what toolbox... what tools we want in our toolbox. Exactly right.
I don't want to see us following some bad examples that have already preceded us, since we have the benefit of their knowledge.
We strive to be regional leader until when... yes, I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Implementation. If you thought that you heard the last of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, you have not. We have received... so Pete worked on a $100,000 grant for equitable housing, and then we also received another $100,000 grant from the TGM Code Assistance, which is a specific grant type to implement the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan.
Transportation Growth Management.
Thank you. And so we have a concept plan that was adopted and is acknowledged, but we never did a map to implement the comprehensive plans designations, and there's some statements in the concept plan that we need to amend the code to reflect, so that they can actually implement. And so we're going to be working on that project over the next year as well. Christina Robertson Gardner is going to be the project manager on that, and we look forward to working through our scope of work now, so maybe end of summer, fall, probably closer to fall, you'll see emails to sit on those committees as well.
And where are we on getting the wetlands map in Kanema amended? I think that, to me, that's like a little simple correction, and I don't want to see it fall to the bottom of the pile.
So I have a... it's not falling to the bottom of the pile, so I would reference all those applications that I just referenced, right? No, it's definitely on our list. We have a... I have an agenda with... that we put out every week with Planning Division stuff, and it's on it as far as our topics. So when we can... it is on our list.
Okay, I just... I mean, I know it's not a really sexy, fun, grant-funded project, but we kind of made a commitment to the community that we were going to get that done, and I really would like to see that moved up into the hierarchy, because it's going to be... it's not going to be that time-consuming. It's going to get... it's one little amendment that we need to get it done, you know, and again, I'd like to see...
I would argue that it's not one little amendment, though. It is actually very time-consuming, and we did promise two months, something like that, to make this a priority, and it is a priority, so I promise you that. So Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan moving forward, and then also, as always, we look forward to increasing our transparency and our efficiency in our development review process. That's it. Anything else? Any questions, concerns?
Pervious and impervious surfaces. That was just... that was brought up at the beginning of the meeting.
So there isn't a lot of context when that was stated, but there has been a lot of confusion in the city about lot coverage and how that relates to pervious and impervious. We have lot coverage, and we have a definition of lot coverage in 1204 of our code, and it doesn't include pervious surfaces, so it doesn't matter if we include X as a pervious surface or not. We really don't distinguish between that difference a whole lot, maybe in Enrod a little bit, but it's... there's a lot of confusion about lot coverage and how it relates to impervious surface. Lot coverage is really geared towards buildings that are 200 square feet or more, and it doesn't include porches. And it doesn't talk about impervious... or dry... it doesn't talk about driveways, it doesn't talk about porches, it doesn't talk about a lot of things. So we are crystal clear on impervious surfaces, and we don't believe that there is an issue if... I can always follow up with the public to make sure that we understand the question.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
There's a code definition for impervious surface, but then when you go and...
Well, one water goes through and the other one doesn't.
Right, exactly. And it includes compacted gravel is considered impervious unless it's been engineered not to be. And there's some pervious concrete products in there as well.
Yes. I mean, it'd be great if we could see more things like driveways or pathways that basically are, you know, what... like we have at the park, we had grasscrete, and you put that in there, and you could still drive over it, but when it rained, it didn't cause a problem, and public works... excuse me, not public works, but parks could still mow it, and it seemed to work really super.
Yeah, so as it has not related to Planning Commission in other venues, there's just been concern about lot... they've been using lot coverage and impervious surfaces interchangeably, and that's not appropriate.
Laura, did I miss something this evening in Paul's comments? Is there something that's happening right now that brought that subject up? Was it regards to hotel, or... obviously not, because it was separate of that kind. But what was that in reference to? I was kind of lost as why it came up tonight.
I would guess that it's related to a Historic Review Board.
Oh, okay.
Decision.
Because I didn't go to all the meetings, so I wasn't quite sure where that was coming from.
Just a guess. I don't know, we'll have to follow up with Paul or Mr. Edgar.
Maybe a little brief memo or something, or a brief email to us that you could copy to him that...
I would prefer not. I mean, I can tell you all about our code, but I'm not sure what his question is, so I'm not sure that I need to give you a memo. I would love to explain all of our code and all that.
Be just to us, because it got brought up, so it's now...
It sounds to me like it was... they kind of was mixing apples and oranges, that he was calling lot coverage impervious surface and vice versa.
I was lost.
Well, technically, if you have a house covering...
Right.
How about this? I will send you our definition of lot coverage, and I think that would probably clear up a bunch.
That'll be helpful.
All right, I will do that.
Okay.
That's all I have. No communications or anything?
Does any of the commissioners have any good of the order?
No. Is recess over?
Recess is almost over. I will be giving you a full report when I come back from Preservation Field School, so look forward to that.